Appreciate everyone that needs to be here, all those that even don't need to be here. We appreciate your presence. We'll go ahead and we'll start by an opening from Councilmember Carl Ward.
I'll give my opening in the form of prayer. Our Father in heaven, as we meet together this evening as a county council, we thank thee for the opportunity to serve, to serve the people of Cache County and to be able to be guided by thy Spirit and direction to make decisions that will be right and best for our county. We ask you to inspire and direct us now as we discuss these things. May there be civility between us and may we help develop civility throughout our county. Us those who stand in need at this time, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Stand, join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carl. We appreciate that approval of the agenda. I'll accept a motion.
Moved, moved. Approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded. We approve the agenda as is. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Usually we have an echo from the phone. We still got, Mark, you still there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I said aye.
Oh, okay.
You just said it at the same time.
How about the approval of the minutes from September 26th?
So moved.
Is it moved and seconded? That we have approval for the minutes of September 26th? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll need to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay, with one abstaining, it passes. So now, county executive report.
Mr. Chair, Council, I have nothing to report other than my sincere excitement to be here and to enjoy this council meeting. So, thank you for all that you each do and for everyone who helps make this county the best place to be.
Now, I got a question. Is that your humble opinion?
It is.
Okay. We always hear about your humble opinions. That's actually, sounds very humble. So, thank you. Well, that's a record, guys. Anyway, let's go ahead and down to 8A, ratification of the Board of Equalization decisions. Have you looked at those?
Yes, I have.
I'm sure we have been quite active and go and clear through September and part of October.
Three hundred and eighty of them.
Yes. We did well. It was really good.
Well, I would move to ratify the decisions made by the Board of Equalization.
I'll second that.
Move seconded, that we ratify the decisions for 2023's Board of Equalization decisions. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that was quite a few. That was, I compliment everybody that was involved in that process. It was, I thought it went along very, very smooth. Is tax hardships, is Diana? Let's wait a little bit, I guess, on that, if we can. Usually she'll come and she'll kind of have some explanations on any questions on those. So, let's skip 9A for a moment. We're gonna really fly. This is good. And the pending action is still on the gram. We can't do the public hearing until 5:30 approximately. So, and the grammed one is still table till December 5th. Let's go ahead and, Micah, would you just share any information about the holiday schedule?
Yeah.
We moved too fast for it.
Pretty cush to be a county employee. Two Christmas people is off.
Yeah, I want to take them off.
Wasn't there a discussion, we were gonna check out one of those days?
Yes. The county employees and for all of those in here, please don't be upset with me, but we don't, under state law, Christmas Eve is not a holiday. That's a holiday we give in the county. So, when it falls like it does this year, we should get the Monday and Tuesday off, not the Friday before off as well.
That is also in county code as well, or county policy, in the personnel procedure.
Pretty cushy.
So, so this will just-
I'll let you take it off, too.
Yeah, the holiday schedule will be Monday and Tuesday, so Christmas and the day after Christmas will be the county holidays. The other change, and this is actually even different than when we looked at it two weeks ago, in November council meetings, so we typically would hold them on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. However, the second Tuesday of November, we'll all be down in St. George at the UAC conference. And so, we are moving, well, this proposal is to move the first council meeting of November to the first Tuesday of November. So, dates would be 7th and the 20th.
Does that matter that it's the election, date of the election?
It's, I actually, isn't the election back? Isn't it moved back?
Utah.
It's gonna be the 21st.
The 21st.
Because of the special-
Special election. So, yes, it won't, our state election is moved this year. So, if it was, if this was any other year, we wouldn't hold a council. Well, we held one last year, I think, so.
On election day?
Yes.
I think, yeah.
We did, yeah, we did.
Okay. Anyone, any other questions on that?
Well, I'd you picked up on this and got things arranged. I'd move that we approve the amended holiday schedule, meeting and holiday schedule for Cache County.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move seconded, that we approve the amended meeting and holiday schedule of Cache County. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, on February 14th, I think we should have a very short meeting.
Yes.
Well, no, that's already happened.
That's already-
This is 2023's.
Yeah.
So, it'll be 2024 is still to come.
Yeah.
But even if it is on that day, we probably ought to anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It is unanimous. Okay. We've got, let's see, let's go ahead with Millville cold storage annexation. Tim, would you take care of that?
Yes. I'll just plug in in just a moment. I always feel proud of myself when I could get this going without Bart's help, and I did it. But it's Bart's training to me, so thank you. All right, so here's the general vicinity of the proposed annexation. Eight point five three acres towards the south and the eastern side of Millville. It extends or creates a peninsula, as you can see, the blue shading representing Millville's city boundaries, and the yellow area represents the eight point five three acres. This is actually part of a larger parcel, and the property owner also owns the adjacent parcel to the south. And so, the proposal is to boundary line adjust the two parcels into the configuration shown here, with the eight point five three acres being parcel 10, and a combination of parcel 10 and 2 becoming the new larger parcel 2. Typically, in an annexation, we look for the fronting right of way to also be annexed into the city. In this case, the recommendation of our Public Works Director and County Engineer is to only annex in the property and continue to coordinate with Millville City on this parcel 25 that the city owns, and explore future right of way annexation associated with that parcel once boundary surveying and so forth, further studied. So, that's the finding and the recommendation from Public Works. We've also noted that the Millville Canyon Road is at least acknowledged as a potential trail and road opportunity for enhancing public access to the National Forest Area. Seen further east on the screen, through the state wildlife area, but up into the forest area. And so, we would encourage the city and the property owner to explore appropriate trail connectivity options in the future. And otherwise, do not find an increase of impact to county facilities and recommend the county consider agreement of this peninsula annexation to Millville.
I was talking about creating an unincorporated peninsula.
Yeah, where is that?
Where is that?
Well, it is-
Consists of three properties, one, two, three, one, two, three, four properties.
That's the part that will be annexed in, that's connected to-
Maybe it's just further creating an existing peninsula. There's a set formula that one of our staff members conducted, and it's either creating the peninsula or expanding a peninsula, in which case we feel that it's wise to-
We're expanding it, yeah, both sides.
South with that yellow area.
And up north amongst all those parcels.
So, if they're doing a boundary line adjustment, is that whole area going to be annexed?
No, the initial proposal, or the current proposal, is just this eight point five three acres.
Are they gonna combine it into one lot?
But aren't they gonna, yeah, do one lot?
The eight point five three acres would become parcel 10. You see parcel 10 labeled here, and it's currently part of this larger parcel area. And then, this portion of parcel 10 and parcel 2 would become a larger parcel 2. And that makes for a clean annexation following parcel boundaries.
Okay, let's talk roads. Up there on the east side, you say the Millville Canyon Access Road right there, right? On the east side of this property?
Correct.
Half of that, half of that property, or half of that road is going to Millville City. There we go.
No roads, so they're not annexed to the right of way. It's the cleanest, I think, for the-
Yes.
We just don't want to have another responsibility for a road going through a city. And I thought that we required, when we annexed, that I thought that portion of that road is annexed.
If you can see the little piece up there that says Millville City, and this first, the proposed annexation, when this first came in, was gonna grab Millville City's property that's in the county and the road. So, that will be future slated. So, not to hold this annexation up, but there's some boundary line, there's some right of way issues that are going on. And so, to get this annexation and not hold it up by not annexing the road is the cleanest thing at this point. Down the road, if, when it comes back and Millville wants to take their other piece in there, then we can snag that piece and the road. If not, we would have hopscotch and it would-
Yeah, we don't want that.
It would get messy. So, this one, we suggested that they just don't annex any road. That way, this road is still in the county, and the rest of that road, it'd still be in the county until future annexation. So, we're recommending that this is probably the best alternate of to not take any of the road at this current time. That's the cleanest. If we start doing half roads, it gets really messy and hopscotches. So, future annexations, then we'll push for them to take all the road.
Okay, so on the east side, specific corp, which probably will never be annexed.
The next piece will probably be that Millville City piece.
Okay, Millville City portion?
Yep.
I want annexed, so.
We won't let, we won't give approval on that until they take the road, then. No. I hope, or something. We've got to make sure that if they're gonna, the cities need to take care of, you know.
But I think it'll be a while before the rest of Lundall's cold storage piece goes in.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be that little area, but there's, there's some boundary line, there's some property line, there's some existing right of way issues that might take a few years to sort out. So, until that gets sorted out, I think this is the best case scenario, so.
Okay. Appreciate that. Anyway, it's on record that it needs to always be said on these annexations, we don't want that. You know, the financial responsibility, everything to go through a city, that it's there, that services mainly their people. So, okay, sorry, Tim.
All right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
The strongest thing we can do as far as trying to preserve trail access, just suggesting that they consider that as they look into their future development of the area?
Well, I think there could be other ideas explored. It just really comes down to what's the purpose of this county and city agreement to an annexation. And the trail implementation, some cities typically can explore an annexation agreement with the property owner. That has not taken place, and it's a question of what's the county's role in facilitating or encouraging that. And so, at this point, we've just recommended and stated, cited that county trails master plan is an important element, so.
The comments? Will, I would actually entertain a motion that we go ahead and-
I move to approve the Millville, what do you call it, Millville cold storage annexation?
Do we have to suspend the rules?
This is, we just basically, we aren't, what we do is we do approve the recommendation of the, the Millville, go ahead with the annexation. You don't-
Yeah, I've seen them with and without a vote in the past.
I know. Does this kind of gives our blessing or not?
Well, I'll second your motion.
Move seconded, that we go ahead and approve this, the Millville, proceed with that annexation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, then they can go ahead to the next step that they need to. Okay, let's, okay, we've got. Diana, okay, we can jump back to 9A, could we, the hardship cases? We've already approved the BOE stuff, so unless you want us to do it again for you.
Just hand you the signature pages or everything, or you're gonna see me on today. So, nice to see you all again. Appreciate your dedication to spending your whole day here. So, hardship cases, you have five of them before you, with the recommendation there in the lower right-hand corner. All of these are previous cases. We come with a recommendation to approve all of those at the percentage that is checked.
And Diana, I appreciate your thoroughness in vetting each of these and putting it together for us. I didn't have any issues with any of them.
Yeah.
I didn't either.
And so, I would make the motion that we approve these five hardship cases as recommended in the documentation for each.
At the recommended percentages.
At the recommended percentage.
I'll second that.
Move seconded, that we approve these hardship cases presented to us at the recommended percentages. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Did we already do Board of Equalization?
Yep.
Yep.
And no questions on that, even with all the highlights and everything? Okay, I'm getting off easy then.
You're doing a good job.
Thanks, Diana.
Okay. I'll, I'll sign these and then give those to Micah. Diana, sign these, give them to Micah, or do you need them back?
Yes, and then he'll get the clerk auditor to sign off on them.
Oh, you'll take care of them. Appreciate that. After I sign them though, right? Okay. Let's go ahead and, with that, it's close enough there to 5:30, so we'll go ahead and set the public hearing for 10A. I'll entertain a motion.
So, move. I'll second it.
Seconded. We set the public hearing for October 24th at approximately 6:00 PM, Resolution 2023-18. Is there any discussion?
Is there a reason it's at 6:00, if we're already kind of hard pressed to be 5:30?
There is a, in other words, you have to wait till people are available after work and things to be able to talk about it. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go ahead with, if we could, talk about on 12B. Sorry to bounce around on that, but we have someone that's coming here shortly. 12B, ordinance 2023-35. Go ahead, Micah. We've all kind of had different discussions at different times, I think, about this. So, when it was even came up in ordinance and policy, we discussed a little bit there, too, so.
Sheriff Jensen may have left his glasses here. This is an ordinance that would separate the offices of county clerk and county auditor. This is a, something that many of you on the council have talked with me about, with each other, but also importantly with our current clerk auditor, who couldn't be here tonight. But I know he, he expressed to you all recently that this was something that he had decided he was in support of. So, what this, what this ordinance does is it will implement the separation January 6th of 2025. And the reason that is so far ahead is that state code requires that any separation of combined, previously combined county offices has to happen the first Monday of the year after a general election. And then, the, so that the voters have an opportunity to elect someone in that position at the beginning of a new term. And also, the county legislative body, that's the county council, must make that separation known prior to November 1st of the year before the general election. So, that's November 1st of this year, because there will be a general election next November, separated for clerk auditor regardless. And so, what this will do is, this will mean there will be a separate election for Cache County clerk and a separate election for Cache County auditor. And we will, starting January 6th, 2025, have an additional elected official here at the county with a county clerk and a county auditor. Happy to answer any questions. Oh, and actually, before I do that, David Benson, our current clerk auditor, has a statement that his deputy sage is going to read on his behalf, if I understand so.
Cache County Councilmembers, having weighed the pro and con arguments, it is my firm opinion that the council should separate by ordinance the offices of county clerk and county auditor as soon as possible. The offices perform very different functions, and although currently small enough to be managed by one elected official, it makes good financial and functional sense to separate them now. This is sincerely David Benson, Cache County Clerk Auditor.
Thank you, Sage. So, yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
There's a lot I think we need to look at. Just since it may financial sense, but it will increase the cost to the county, because we'll have an additional salary to pay. There will be staff associated, perhaps by having a separate auditor from clerk's office. We'll have to work out where to house them in the administration building. And so, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, I'm just saying that there's a lot of things that we need to look at and think about. And we're under a tight, tight timeline on being, making this decision. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I mean, I remember clearly when there was a separate auditor and a separate clerk. And there were reasons why, at that time, the council felt the need to combine those two offices for various reasons, not necessarily related to their functions being similar. But, you know, I guess you don't need to worry about budget issues with that at this, at this stage. But these are just some things that I think we need to look at with a little more detail before we decide.
Those were my exact questions. I'd like to know space, and I think there should be able to come up, and I don't know if Amy can do that, give us the cost analysis of another office or staffing, what we're looking at. I mean, if we could have that by the 24th, we still need to November 1st, but.
One of the things, when I discussed this with David Benson last week, he, he had the idea of, of housing the auditor in what is currently the Finance Division Office. And, and like, so the, the actual office where the county auditor would reside would be the former office of where the Finance Department head was at. And so, that, I mean, that's a good start to answer one part of that question. But as far as the budget, yeah, I think we would need help from HR and have a good idea what the compensation would be like. Then, obviously, this would be for the 2025 budget we'd set a year from now.
Also, isn't there a state statute that once we reach a certain population, we have to separate them by law? And we're getting pretty close.
That population is 175,000, so we're actually pretty close.
So, that'll happen eventually anyway, so like-
Right now?
140s.
Yeah, that depends on the day.
Yeah. Depends on who's out of town.
You hear a different number wherever, it seems like, whoever you ask, but yeah.
But that is something to consider, too.
One thing that has caused me to give pause is if we're looking for, one, we know that anyone that's compelling enough can become an elected official, right? We're all evidence of that in some way or another, we're compelled, if you want to call it that, but be able to elect us. And, and that doesn't necessarily mean that we will have a professional, a highly professional staff, if it's an elected official.
Which is the case in the combined offices anyway.
Right, but that would mean we would establish another position, you know, that would be beholden and have certain requirements, would not be an elected position. That's what my thought is, is it would have requirements that would necessitate this person to be more professional.
I don't think you can make those stipulations.
So, under-
Well, I'm saying, as, as, as not as an elected official, as a hired individual.
Deputy clerk and then a deputy auditor, et cetera. Is that what you mean, Catherine?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, as we are searching for a financial administration supervisor at this time, with, and filling that vacancy, we do have those types of stipulations on it and the education and experience requirements that we're looking for. So, I see that this person would be able to help that elected official continue with some continuity and to be able to move forward with that, so.
Which is kind of a lot, how, lot of the, you know, you're elected official, and then you have almost someone who knows what they're doing blow you.
Yeah.
Which is good.
I didn't say that.
I did. That sometimes, and that's like you say, that sometimes can give you continuity for the next, you know, it's whatever changes from one election to another.
Right.
So, if we have a hired professional, wouldn't that negate the need for the elected official?
Not really, because it, the, I don't think, I think you'd still need one because they're-
because there, the, the duties of the auditor is so financial and the clerk is, be the elections. And so that kind of really separates the, the one official, one elected official does, you know, focuses on each of those areas. That's what my.
I agree with where Catherine's going. You get an elected official who is titled an auditor. When we elected Mr. Murray as an attorney, he had credentials as an attorney. And we elected our sheriff, he had credentials as sheriff. Now, I know we can't do it, but I see where she's headed is if we have a chief deputy, and we'll have a chief deputy if we have an auditor anyhow, but it just seems that if you've hired the chief deputy right, then he's over that. But then if you elect an auditor who does not have the background of what the chief deputy is, then.
Then it's a figurehead. It's a figurehead with a big salary.
Did we gain anything?
That we can't get rid of as a council, because we, I mean, as you look at relationships and things that you, we know that we have to work with our fellow elected officials, and we don't have, our hands are tied if it's an elected official.
Is, looking at this and Micah or Dame, is there any possibility that that person could be appointed by the council instead of being an elected official?
No.
As a chief, as a chief deputy, but not as a.
No, so, um, an elected official, even, even if we just kept it as a, a chief deputy position, if we got someone new elected, the new elected can choose their own chief deputy. So our chief deputy positions are at-will positions. So, and that's different than department heads under, under the executive. Those chief deputy positions are like, like Dirk's position. He, he serves at the pleasure of the elected official, my chief deputy. Some, some, like the attorney's office and sheriff's office have some protection there where they're in a career status. They kind of revert back, but it's my understanding that some others are just, they're at the, the pleasure of the elected.
Yeah, it would depend on if they held a, a merit position before they were appointed to a chief deputy, then if that elected official chose to not continue with them as their chief deputy, they would move back to that merit position that they held previously. But if they were hired in and appointed as the chief deputy to start with and didn't hold a merit position before, then if the elected official chose not to continue on with them, then they would no longer have a position with the county.
Amy, can I ask you a question? Have, are you receiving applications for that financial director?
Yes, and we've just about made a final decision, so, yeah.
That's comforting.
I, I would think add one more thing, mostly to respond to Catherine, to your comment. Right now, with the combined clerk auditor, someone who, who may be interested in running for that position may be very interested in one half of that position, but less interested in another. And I think if you have someone with a financial background, who maybe has been an accountant or may, even an a professional auditor, would look at the clerk auditor position as it is now and say, oh, I do not want to deal in that elections. That is so foreign to me, and I don't want to, I don't want to get into that. But if it was just auditor and they didn't have to worry about that, and they could just worry about audits, which is what their career is, and what, what they spent their career worrying about, they may be a little bit more interested in, in running for that position. And I, it's not, you know, my intent to, to lobby one way or the other, but I think to, to provide some, some justification for why it might be, it might be worthwhile to consider separating them. And that it, you may still end up with applicants who are more qualified to be an actual auditor than, than having them combined as they are now.
Also, you know, you'd, you'd say it's just a figurehead, but not really, because all the employees, like, there is a structure where they have to answer to. And so right now, the one elected official has, has doubled the employees that answer to them. To where if you separated, they could keep more focused on their line. It seems like to me that it wouldn't be just a figurehead. It would be someone who manages that department, even though they're not, they might be coming and going. I don't know, does that make sense?
That makes sense to me. And what Micah said just now, also, I think, as merit, as we think about this, because, um, someone who runs for the, the office of county auditor will likely have an interest in.
I hope.
In finance and auditing, particularly now that the finance department is under the auditor.
Yes.
And whereas before this, um, because, uh, functions are intertwined, but, uh.
And, and what yours, you know, when, to piggyback on, on a little bit of that is, and that's kind of where we've kind of been, we've hurt in one area is because we didn't ask who is out there with some expertise that the people could actually choose from.
Right.
That actually has that expertise in finance or whatever it may be that actually look at those things. We've had to kind of balance clerk and auditor and kind of combine them and, and try to bring the best of both worlds was all but impossible. And so, you know, I've, I've, I think it'd be a real good thing as far as costs go. I think that we, it's not going to be a whole lot more expensive if you structure it as an elected, if you got your elected official. But then what we were actually paying, you know, uh, the finance director and then another deputy finance underneath them, you start looking at that, I go and, I'm going, I think it, I won't say cost savings, but I think we're not going to be a whole lot difference. Facilities, I think we have the facilities up there, it's just a matter of working them out.
If we have an auditor that, that is qualified to do some of those performance audits, that'll save us paying an outside auditor. I know, and we'll still have to have outside audit to, to audit the auditor. You know, there will still be a need for outside audits, but there could be savings there if they're qualified or comfortable doing those performance audits.
But I, I'll just go back to, what we're saying is best case scenario, but we do have to fall back and we have no idea who this individual could be. It's whoever is going to put their name on a ballot. And it has, don't have any control of every, any level of professionalism or training.
We, we don't, we don't have any control over any elected office.
But, but the people do.
People do.
And that's, I guess that's what the election's all about.
I'm inclined to, to separate them, but I, you know, we will get some of these other questions answered to our comfort.
Well, I guess we do, we can probably look for maybe what a, an average pay for an auditor would be. You even looked into that at all, Amy?
Uh, I do have, uh, statistics on that. Um, I didn't include it in our compensation meeting today that we had, but I can certainly put that together and present it in our workshop next, next week.
That would just be an estimate now, but it wouldn't be coming to fruition till a year, over year from now.
Right, but it would give you an idea of what you're looking at and what we need to be prepared for, so.
Thanks, Amy.
And I can also talk with David Benson about other details that, you know, the physical space, what that would take, if there'd be any significant changes, and look with Amy on that.
I don't think when, I think it was put on the agenda, I don't think we had, uh, we thought that we would approve this anyway tonight. We were hoping to bring that up, talk about it, and, uh, you know, ask the questions that we're asking, and then try to bring that back and if, and see if we can beat that deadline if we do want it for the next election. So, Amy, question?
One fun fact really quick is that I was looking at the fire plan that's posted outside of the elevator and where the finance office is sitting, it still says auditor on it, so. We wouldn't have to change that, because it's already there. No one's changed it for years.
Saved twelve bucks already. Anyway, no other questions or comments that would?
Yeah, we'd pay that in the name plate for the door, so there's no cost savings.
Okay, is any, any motion or anything, or do you want to just put it for next week? Or in the twenty?
Let's follow it up on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, we'll just keep that on the agenda for next, the next county council meeting. Okay, with that in mind, uh, I was hoping that they would be back. We got one more that we were going to talk about. We're hoping that they would be here for that. Well, uh, Barbara, would you share with us any information on the, the summer party that's in October?
Yeah. That is here. It's a week from tonight at Gordy's house. And I've gotten a pretty good response back from most people. And I will be sending out a reminder, uh, of what your food assignments will be.
What's the menu?
Prime rib.
Ooh.
Gordy's cooking prime rib and baked potatoes. And I'm in charge of the potatoes and all the fixins on them, and then we'll have salads and dessert.
You may sneak some liver and onions in there, though.
I'm, I'm not.
Ever had a liver and onion party?
No.
Uh, okay, any questions on that? Uh, how about you, Acq? Is there any additions or deletions from that?
I do have one question. Mark, are you planning attending the?
I am. At this point, I believe I, I will be able to make it. Um, and so yes, I'm planning on it, I have registered.
Okay. No, I meant the, the summer party. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
No, that's my bad.
We, we will be there, um, you know, depending on how things go, whether it's a full time or not, but yes, Nicole and I will be coming.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone seen, okay, on UAC, has anyone seen a full schedule yet?
I have not, and I looked for it online.
I did.
They haven't posted it yet.
Yeah, I hadn't seen it yet, because I was wondering about, you know, we'd had those, some of those advertisements on maybe an activity before that someone had interest in or something. I'd take y'all horseback riding or something, but.
Is it really three days, like the fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth? Last time it was just one full day and a half.
There's a legislative thing on the fourteenth, I know.
Yeah.
That UAC is usually a little shorter than UAC.
Yeah, I, I think Tuesday at around noon is when it starts, and I think it goes till Thursday, Thursday morning.
Okay.
So that would be the sixteenth.
And, uh.
Oh, okay, so this is not correct.
We need to have someone kind of start working with the county basket?
Yeah, I would, thank you for mentioning that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll need to kind of, that's where they.
They have a raffle.
They have a raffle draw for all twenty-nine counties.
Yeah.
It's. It really, it's kind of a neat, if you go around, you look at them, you see what every county's all about, it's pretty neat.
We should go over to Julie's office and there's some cool things on the wall over there.
She was telling me that's what they usually do is work with Julie to put together a basket. I'll, I'll talk to her, I think.
Okay, that's terrific.
And their odds, their odds will be higher for waiting since Nolan and I never wait.
Me neither.
Never.
Yeah.
Who did the gun that was gifted away from one of them?
One, two, three, that's six. Who, who is not able, who's there?
I'm not going.
You're not?
Why? Because I can't.
Now, yes, you're, you just can't spell the word party. It lands, this, that's actually a, a very, very.
I like Bryce.
Bryce is fun.
Bryce is a lot fun.
But, uh, UAC is actually a very, very good way to connect with a lot of people.
Yep.
These are all county elected officials?
Yeah, as well as special.
Similar to the one we attended in Salt Lake.
What's that?
Similar to the one we attended in Salt Lake.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
In April.
Yep. Uh, bigger, bigger though.
We like, we went last year in November.
I wasn't elected yet, was I?
I know, we did go, you went anyway, didn't you?
Not.
Oh, we had, yeah, a lot of them did, went, went down for that training.
Oh, I went.
So. I don't think we're ready for that.
Oh, that's the case.
Okay, uh.
Should we text near Dame's?
Well, we're, we're waiting again, there's one more item that we have, and we're waiting for them to get back here. To be part of that, I guess we could almost talk about it, but they ought to be here to answer some questions if we need, but. Any, any council person reports?
The only thing I would comment on is that, uh, the, uh, Jones-Sinkins presented their audit to us in our audit committee meeting. And as an audit committee, we, we accepted the audit. They will be coming here to present the audit to the council as a whole.
On the twenty-fourth?
On the twenty-fourth. But, uh, we, uh, uh, no, uh, particular, particular concerns that they had. Some weaknesses that they had pointed out in previous audits have been corrected, and they commented about that. And so, uh, overall, it was, I think, a good audit.
Okay. Sandy?
I was, I was just going to talk about that, that's, that's all I got.
Okay, Barbara?
Nothing.
No one?
I don't think so.
Well, then let's go back to eleven C. They aren't here, but let's go ahead, I think, if you want to have some discussion or.
Yeah, she's going to be a while, since we do the other thing.
Uh, number fifteen?
Yeah. She's not going to be here for a while.
How much time would you have?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Should I text her and just see how close they are?
I'm texting right now, right now.
Yeah, text her and see if they're even close. Maybe the school district's having a big.
How many questions?
Yeah.
Council has for.
Do we have a lot to discuss about it?
We might. As far as, uh, the R D A?
Yeah.
I, I think we vetted that pretty, pretty good, so.
I'll, I'll just state that I think it's a win-win for our county. I don't see a downside to it at all. The developer bears the risk, whether it's a viable project or not, that's, that's their risk. And, uh, we're not losing any tax dollars to them off of a declining valued property. And, uh, so, uh, I, I think it's just plain a good thing for our county.
Other comments?
I agree with Carl.
What happens, I mean, you do that, but you're leaving out Bates and Maine, Arby's, Carl's Jr., and Texas Roadhouse, right?
That isn't our purview. We don't really have control over the impact to private, to the private entities that are there. It may get developed or redeveloped anyway, whether we do, whether we approve the, the, uh, R D A for this particular parcel. And, uh, and so that, that's, again, is up to the city and it's up to the developer to deal with people who are going to be affected. And something's got to happen irregardless with, with that site.
Have they been given an opportunity to come to a public meeting and, I mean, what is their concern?
I'm at, low, low, it would come to Logan City's.
To Logan City.
You know, Logan, known as all property owners within and adjacent property owners, I could have a date on that if you need it.
No, I, I would just assume that they've had that opportunity.
That, yeah.
To express concern.
Other questions? Well, they aren't here, but I guess we could.
Should we vote on it?
Well, when they walk in, they'll be happy if either one, unless, unless there's a huge change.
Can I ask a question?
Vote it down.
Can I ask a question, Diane?
Please.
At one time, Craig McAllister talked about there was some concerns for taxes as this goes on for the county side. Do you know what he's addressed or have you and him talked on this?
I think that, uh.
Diane, could you come up here, please? Thank you.
Grabbing my R D A stuff, can she really want to grab it? So I think it probably. Dana Schaefer with the Tax Admin Office goes back to what Sandy already mentioned, where he's like, well, if they're going to turn it into one of these non-taxables, which is a huge issue with us. I mean, we stand to lose a lot, not with this R D A, because out of, I think they have three, three hundred and forty-six units of that, thirty-five will be low income, which, as he reassured you, would be mingled in and amongst the others. They couldn't separate it and turn it into a non-taxable. I believe that was McAllister's. I believe that was McAllister's huge concern, because like, we're looking at places like Maple Springs, huge, huge erosion of the tax base, where I think you were talking about possibly getting that on the hill as a working project, totally off-topic.
Yeah, we need to talk about that, because I talked about it at UAC, at a UAC training meeting with their legislative guy, and he pulled up the bill that Craig McAllister was referencing.
HB 231 or...
Yeah, and it says specifically in there that it is for people who were home, it has to be a homeless, there was some specifics that it made it sound like permanent supportive housing, not just low-income housing.
Well, the problem that I had with it was that there was the word, "We intend to sell it to a 501(c)(3) within 15 years."
Yeah.
I have a problem with intention.
Yeah, it still needs to be looked at.
Or contemplation in contracts or bills.
But to me, that doesn't, that would preclude something like a Maple Springs, because they're not a permanent supportive housing. So this was made for, we need to, we need to look at it some more.
Yeah, we still need to look. So anyhow, that, Nolan, to your point, is what McAllister's concern was that I heard and that Sandy heard.
Okay, if that helps, thank you. Other questions?
Out of state, I still have a concern of 20 years. I know what they presented, but 20 years is a flipping long time.
I was comforted to see some of these other 20-year ones that have come through and are paying off, and they, in theory, were not run down or losing value after 20 years to the point where it wasn't worth the investment, so...
The cap gives us a little bit of, you know, where they've required that. I think that that gives you a little bit of a calmness to it. 20 years was a big one for me, too, but I...
This developer is honestly taking on a project with heavy risk, and there's, as we pointed out, issues of current interest rates. I think I sit on the Logan City Economic Development Committee, and when it was first presented there, I was very, very surprised that the developer is still going forward with a forecasted cap rate of below 2%. And that is extremely low expected return on investment, and yet they're still willing to go ahead with it. And so I, I just think that this is an opportunity that we ought to take advantage of.
Well, I feel like we've, the professionalism that we experienced in their presentations and the, I think they've been forthwith on, on all the information and answering to all the questions, and, and it didn't seem like anything has been withheld, you know, from us. I think that, I feel a lot more, a lot better about this RDA than I have a couple others that we just recently had, and I think this one actually has some strong merit at the time, but I think I'll, I'll probably go ahead and agree with the time of 20 years, because I think it will, well, we, those others have matured, and so our net tax burden that we're going to have to work with as far as taxes that, you know, are coming in, I think we can work with that, so, anyway.
Well, with this, I will make a motion, we approve Resolution 2023-16 consenting to the Logan Redevelopment Agency receiving tax increment attributable to Cache County's tax levy generated in the 1400 North Main Community Reinvestment Project area.
I second that. A movement seconded that we approve Resolution 2023-16 on the consenting to the Logan Redevelopment Agency receiving tax increment attributable to the Cache County's tax levy generated at 1400 North Community Reinvestment Project area. Is there any discussion? And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, with that in mind, let's go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, no, excuse me, adjourn, yeah, that'd be nice, to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Go into executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, and I'm supposed to state for the purpose of discussion regarding deployment of security personnel, devices, or systems. All those in favor, again, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.